Good evening and welcome to the Glendale City Council Meeting of August the 10th, 2021, which I'm about to call to order at 6:05. Now, to help slow the transmission of COVID-19 and protect the health and safety of the community, City Council as well as boards and commission meetings will continue to be closed to the public for in-person attendance. The public is encouraged, though, to watch and participate from the safety of your homes to practice social distancing. The meetings can be viewed on local cable charter Cable Channel 6 and AT&amp;T Newverse Channel 99, streaming in high definition online at glendaleca.gov/live, youtube.com, and a free app called Screen Weave on Apple TV, Roku, and Amazon Fire Devices. Choose Glendale TV from the menu. For public comments and questions during the meeting, please call 818-937-8100. City staff will be submitting these questions and comments in real time to the appropriate person during the Glendale City Council meeting. And with that, Mr. Jimmy, roll call.
Councilmember Agajanian.
President.
Brotman.
Here.
Kusakian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
And Mayor Devine.
Here. And what's next, please?
Next would be flag salute.
Thank you. Will stand if you will. Join us in the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for tonight's invocation. Let us join in prayer and ask for enlightenment and good judgment for tonight's meeting. Help us to work as a unified team in combining ideas for a great outcome. Help us to work as a whole rather than as individuals. We ask your blessings on the people who have been called to lead the community in which we live, work, and play. We place our hearts and our minds in your hands so that you may direct us. Amen.
Thank you. And next, please, your report.
The agenda for the August 10th, 2021, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on August 4th, 2021, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Next.
Presentations and appointments, 3A agenda preview for the meeting of Tuesday, August 17, 2021, by John Tucktullian.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Devine, members of the City Council. Next week, we will have a joint meeting of the Housing Authority and City Council. There is one item on that agenda, and that's an analysis of the principles of the Regional Housing Needs Assessment and the housing element. In the evening for the City Council meeting, under consent items, at 4B is going to be a report from Water and Power regarding professional services agreement with EN Engineering LLC regarding power transmission and distribution system inspections. That'll be followed by a report from Public Works regarding the approval of a final track map for a three-unit condominium subdivision at 600 West Wilson Avenue. That'll be followed by a report from the Finance Department regarding the Audit Committee's annual report and the internal audit annual work plan. Then we'll hear from our Police Department regarding the fiscal year 21/22 grant from the State of California's Office of Traffic Safety for traffic records improvement projects. And finally, the last item under consent is going to be from the Public Works Department regarding the maintenance of traffic signals and other traffic-related electrical devices. We also have two action items that evening. The first will be one from the Police Department regarding a report from regarding the Los Angeles County District Attorney Special Directives and impacts associated with those directives. And the main event for that particular evening seems to be one from the City Attorney's Office regarding the discussion of council districts and a directly elected mayor in the city of Glendale. That concludes next week's preview.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I would like to, under presentations, I know that we were all moved and upset and saddened by the deaths of the young kids on Glen Oaks Avenue in that horrific crash this past week. The accident is still, of course, under investigation, but I think we all are of the impression that speeding was involved. And I have asked Chief Povolitis to come tonight and talk to our residents because I know that they are all concerned about the speeding on Glen Oaks, the reckless driving, et cetera, and to just give us an update on the impact that this crash had on our Police Department and protocol, and if they have plans moving forward. I really feel like Glendale dodged a bullet here. This was a shot across the bow. This is what can happen on a thoroughfare like Glen Oaks. And so I ask Chief Povolitis if he would just let us know how our Glendale Police Department is going to address this type of an issue in our community.
Good evening, Mayor Devine, members of the City Council, Carl Povolitis, Police Chief. Just to echo your comments, I know we all heard about the traffic collision in Burbank in which three people lost their lives, and our hearts certainly go out to the families of all of those folks. And obviously, I'm very well aware that members of our community are concerned about traffic safety, and I would echo the fact that so are the men and women of the Glendale Police Department, very concerned about traffic safety. And Glen Oaks, probably for most of my career, has been one of the streets that is regularly mentioned as an issue having to do with speeding and reckless driving. I can also tell you that we also saw an increase in speeding and some of the reckless driving as we entered the pandemic. So as people were staying home and the levels of traffic reduced, we saw some situations where the level of speed with certain individuals actually increased. And so we were actually very proactive in taking steps to address those. And so let me take a moment to maybe just kind of run through some of the things that we have done last year and where we are vis-à-vis some of those same things this year. So in 2020, we put a concerted effort on reckless driving and speed contests in the city of Glendale, and during that last year, we actually arrested 173 people for those violations. 173. And one of the things, maybe to the chagrin of some of those that got arrested, is we have published press releases on every single one of those arrests, listing the violations and those that have been arrested for that. So far in 2021, we have made 83 arrests for those same violations. And that obviously just runs through the end of July, the very beginning of August. And so in addition to putting an emphasis on those, we also put an emphasis on speed enforcement. And so in 2020, we issued 2,613 citations for speeding. 583 of those were actually on the Glen Oaks corridor. In 2021, so far this year, we've issued 1,518 speeding citations, and 349 of those are on Glen Oaks. Again, both with our motor officers and our patrol officers putting an emphasis on those streets where we see those violations based on the data that we get, our observations and input from the community. And then, you know, last year, we wrote 12,242 citations citywide. This year, so far, we've written 8,179 citations, again, keeping that emphasis on traffic enforcement. So actually, even predating the tragedy that occurred in Burbank, our Traffic Bureau and our Patrol Bureau actually decided to put an additional focus this year. And in a police department, we have a habit of sometimes dubbing or naming operations. And so starting in July, we actually started an internal operation. We kind of dubbed it Operation Fast and Furious. And so that is to focus on speed-related reckless driving, speed contests, modified exhausts, and a few other key violations. And so this last weekend, there was a focused task force effort on this, in which 132 citations were written for people who had violated those sections. 75 of those were for excessive speed. 26 were for other moving violations, and then the balance of those were a combination of equipment violations, including exhausts and windshield issues, tinted windows, and lighting. What you have also seen is we have increased the use of signage. You'll see our message boards that are out there to remind people that there is a no-tolerance approach for reckless driving, and that we've increased the emphasis on modified cars that people tend to use to do this. And in the last week, we've also stepped up our social media presence. So as we do these operations, we're putting that information out so that we keep the community well informed on those issues. And we're going to continue using both our patrol and our motor officers to focus on these issues. But I think there's also another part. It's like the Police Department can do its part, but I also want to put a call out to the community that we have to do our part there. You know, occasionally, you know, as I review some of the things that go on in the Police Department, I was looking at a body worn camera of a traffic stop where someone was stopped for going 20 miles an hour over the speed limit on a particular thing, and they thought it was no big deal. Well, I'm here to say that it is a big deal. But we've got to look at ourselves and look at ourselves as a community and go, look, the speed limits are important. It's what buys us the time to see something and avoid something, and we have to do that. If you are a parent of a young adult and you are giving them the keys to the car, you have a responsibility to kind of know how they are driving that car. I can tell you, I don't know how many times we have parents come in and they go, oh, I didn't know my kid was driving the car in a reckless manner, when they want to get it out of it because we've impounded it and they want to get it released early because they didn't know what their kid was doing. Well, I think for all of us, when we look at a tragedy like that, it's like, please pay attention to what your kids are doing. Please emphasize that driving safe is important. It's important to get there safely. The speed that you're going is not going to make very much of a time difference based on the distances that most of us travel. But if you have the collision, the amount of energy from that extra speed will cause a lot more injuries, and it does not allow you time to react to something that might pop up in the road. So I'm asking the community as a whole to please slow down, pay attention, pay attention to what your kids are doing. As a part of a community is the only way that we're going to keep our community safe and improve traffic safety.
Thank you. Do you plan on, may I ask, and then I'll ask my colleagues, I'm sorry, do you plan on adding any more traffic officers to Glen Oaks? I know I've traveled from Burbank a lot on Glen Oaks, and I've seen cars swerving from side to side and burning rubber to try to make a statement, I guess. I don't know. I can't even imagine what goes on at night in the dark. So like after 10, more officers on Glen Oaks. Do you have any plans similar to that? Not that we wanted to divulge it to the community, but maybe it would be good.
We have been engaged in that, and we will continue to be engaged in that. We know that it occurs in the later hours of the evening. And so in addition to the motor officers, the officers on the motorcycles, our Patrol Division is actively engaged, and it is a special project in which resources are actually devoted to not only Glen Oaks, but some of our other major thoroughfares where we've identified issues to specifically work on enforcing those issues.
And I also have to say that since you've put those, the message boards out on the muffler modifications, that I think I've noticed a difference, especially up here in the hills, because we have some cars that come down this hillside, they must be going 50, and just the mufflers are incredibly loud. I'd like to ask my colleagues if they have questions for the chief or comments.
Madam Mayor.
Actually.
One at a time, please. Councilmember Kusakian, did I hear you?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I want to thank the chief for making, putting forth these efforts to address an issue that has been a serious concern for some time now, and I appreciate that. The exhaust, the illegal exhaust enforcement is underway. I would say that I've also noticed a difference. There's still, you know, you can still hear it out there, but far less than before. I don't know if that's causation or correlation, but certainly the presence is being felt, at least. You know, I've seen a lot more speed enforcement on certain roads on, well, I won't go ahead and list the locations so as not to divulge your strategy. But I will say that in addition to that, I think that we need to continue the efforts as earnestly and as much as we can. And in addition to that, I believe that, you know, anything like the window tinting, the excessive window tinting, that is an issue with a lot of these cars, these drivers who feel that perhaps they can break the law and maybe go unnoticed or whatever the case may be. We just need to let them know that this is a city where people need to follow the rules, and there is no real excuses to not follow them. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Brotman.
Yeah, I had a couple of thoughts as Chief Povolitis was talking. And one of them is, I think we put an unfair burden on the Police Department to solve this problem sometimes, and they don't necessarily have all the tools that they should have. And one example, I think everybody here on Council knows, is that we were hoping to be able to pilot automated speed enforcement. And I think the idea was that we were going to put that on Glen Oaks. And there was a bill in the legislature that would have allowed us to be one of, I think, two cities in Southern California to pilot speed cameras that would pick up license plates and issue automated tickets. And the legislature shot it down. It didn't even get out of committee. I understand that Laura Friedman, who is one of the co-authors of that, said she will bring it back next year. But I think it's just an example of the way our Police Department at times just doesn't, you know, doesn't have all the tools it needs. Another piece of legislation that got shut down a couple of years ago, and I can't remember the details or the number of the bill, but it would have allowed longer impoundments of cars that were involved in reckless driving incidents. And that was also killed in the legislature. So I hope that everybody, you know, that complains, and I do hear a lot of complaints, you know, where are the police? Why aren't they doing more? Is, you know, they don't necessarily have all the tools at their disposal. The other thing I would like to say is that slowing traffic is not just a matter of enforcement. I think we all know that. It's a matter of, and it's not just a matter of education or exhortations either, it's a matter of how we design roads. And we know, and it's well established, that when you have a multi-lane road like Glen Oaks with three lanes in either direction and wide lanes, that it encourages speeding. And the one, you know, thing that we have coming down the pike is the BRT, and that is going to involve some lane reduction along that corridor and narrowing, I believe, narrowing of the lane widths and more street trees, I believe, and other things that, and a bike path, things that I think will naturally slow the traffic. Now, is it going to prevent, you know, somebody coming out at 2:00 in the morning when the roads are empty and speeding down and doing a contest? No. But I think it will make a difference. And so I just want everybody to understand it's not something we can just throw on our Police Department to fix. It's engineering, and it's education, and it's enforcement, and our police don't always have the tools that they need.
Anyone else? Member Najarian.
Madam Mayor, yes, I'd like to, I guess, echo the remarks by Mr. Brotman. I think we will be seeing a reduction in the number of travel lanes down Glen Oaks, and I think naturally it's going to bring a lessening of the speed, which is great. But not just Glen Oaks, we'll have it on Central also. Central is quite a little speedway as well. And I do appreciate, Chief, all the work of the force and the traffic, the motor officers in particular, and I saw them out there in the evening, in the dark, and I usually don't see them in the evenings enforcing. But let us know. I mean, I want to make sure that you're fully funded, fully funded. That's a term we don't hear too often with regard to police, but especially in the Motor and Traffic Division, because I think this is a community that fully supports traffic and speed enforcement, whether it's by individual officers or whether it's by new technology pending state legislation. We support it. So don't ever think that, don't ever have any doubt about where this City Council and the residents of Glendale stand. So we're ready to support you in any way possible and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Agajanian.
I just want to ask the chief if he's still there. Chief Povolitis, you spoke about how many drivers are speeding, but I just want to know if how many speed contests the police officers has been stopped during the speed contest. Do you have any numbers for such incidents that officers stopped the people while they are, they are involved in a contest?
Like street racing?
So.
Racing, yeah.
So Councilmember Agajanian, members of City Council, I actually have those numbers combined right now with both reckless driving and speed contests. So in 2020, we arrested 173 people for those two violations, either driving recklessly or a speed contest. And so far in 2021, we've arrested 83.
But you do not have specifically, specifically for street contests?
If I can, I do not have that number right here, but if you want that number, I can break that number out for speed contests.
Yeah, because the reason I'm so interested on it, because when there are speed contests, when they are racing against each other, especially if they are younger drivers, they're, all their attention goes on the other driver to see where they are. So they continuously, they're watching the other car rather than the street. It's very different than somebody is going fast. Extremely dangerous because they don't pay attention to where they are going. That's why I thought maybe we'd be interested to know how many times you are able to stop them while they are contesting or it's a speed contest. So, thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank you, Chief, for giving us this report, for being here tonight. I know that the reconfiguration of our streets is going to take a while, maybe a few years, but I am with you 100% in telling parents that, you know, you are responsible for knowing where your children are and what they are doing and how they are driving. So thanks again for being here, and let's hope that the community hears us and takes heed. Thank you. And what's next, please?
The following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of Council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
I would like to.
One moment, if I might. I do want to pull, I think it's 4C on the Class 2 bike lanes, and just discuss that separately.
Thank you. So can we have a motion for the rest of the consent calendar?
Okay. Item, I would like to move item 4A, 4B, 4D, 4E, and 4F.
There's a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Kusakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
And Mayor Devine.
Yes.
Item 4C, Public Works Regarding Installation of Class 2 Bike Lanes and Creative Crosswalk Project. One, Resolution Adopting the Plans and Specifications for Installation of Class 2 Bike Lanes and Creative Crosswalk Project, specification number 3903, plan number 49-252, and directing the city clerk to advertise for bids. Two, Resolution of Appropriation to Transfer and Appropriate Funds for the Installation of Class 2 Bike Lanes and Creative Crosswalk Projects.
Okay. Councilmember Brotman.
Yeah, so I, well, first of all, I mean, I definitely support us doing Class 2 bike lanes. I'm excited to see we're doing them and the creative crosswalks. My question, and I spoke to our Director of Public Works, Mr. Imroni, yesterday about this. The one on Glenwood has a, we have a, on each side, we have a 10-foot wide travel lane, 8-foot wide parking lane, and that leaves only 4 and 1/2 to 5 feet for the bike lane, which is tight. And we know this area, right where we're discussing, is, has a lot of schools. We have Hoover, we have Toll, we have Keppel right in there, and we have a lot of kids that ride to school on bikes. They ride now on the sidewalks. And I'm concerned that a 4 and 1/2 or 5-foot bike lane next to, next to traffic is not going to be something that, you know, we necessarily want kids using. So I wanted to ask if it would be possible to look at either skinning down the travel lanes, I don't know if you can because they're 10 feet, but I just want to ask that, or the parking lane, the 8-foot parking lane maybe can be skinnied to make room for a slightly larger, wider bike lane, or if we could somehow put the bike lanes next to the sidewalk on the opposite side of the parked cars like we see more and more. And I think we're considering doing on Glen Oaks. If that, that might allow us to keep the same narrow bike lane, but it would be safe and it would be something that the kids would use.
Go ahead.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of City Council, Councilmember Brotman. Yes, we can look at a couple of things. First of all, in terms of the travel lanes, the minimum width for a travel lane for that type of a community collector, which is what Glenwood is classified as, would be 10 feet. So to allow for not only cars, but for trash trucks and, you know, emergency vehicles to be able to maneuver safely, we would leave them, we would like to recommend that we leave them at 10 feet, and that's based on our design standards, which we use the Green Book. However, what we can do is look at reducing the parking width from 8 feet to 7 and 1/2 feet to give an extra half a foot, to have a 5-foot, which is the minimum recommended width for the bike lanes for that area. So we can certainly do that.
How about swapping out the positioning of the bike lane relative to the parked cars?
However, what we can do is look at reducing the the parking width from 8 feet to 7 and 1/2 feet to give an extra half a foot, to have a 5-foot, which is the minimum recommended width for the bike lanes for that area. So we can certainly do that.
How about swapping out the positioning of the bike lane relative to the parked cars? I mean, that really would be the ideal solution. That would give us a protected bike lane, not just a a Class 2.
If we were to do that, we would also need to have an additional buffer probably for opening of the the car doors. So that would require probably an extra foot or foot and a half, which we don't have in this section. So basically, the street width is 45 feet. So the 22 and 1/2 feet that we have to work with, it's going to be pretty tight to do that and allow for that buffer zone for the car doors if we put it on the other side.
Okay, well, I mean, do what you can, obviously. I I just, it would be great if we could get it, get something that that the kids would be comfortable and the parents would be comfortable having their kids use to ride to school.
Absolutely. We'll definitely look at reducing the the width of the parking lane.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments? I just thought this was a great, a great item because we have creative crosswalks painted. In case people don't know, a Class 2 bike lane is colored, and I think that is a step in the right direction. I'm all about color and safety. So with that, would you like to move the item, Mr. Brotman?
I'll move the item, yes.
Do we have a second?
I believe Councilmember Agajanian wants to second it.
Second.
Yeah, second. All right, all righty. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Devine?
Yes, thank you. And what's next, please?
Next would be City Council and staff comments.
Okay, do we have comments from council? My colleagues?
I do.
Mr. Brotman?
Okay, I have two things. First, I think we have all been hearing in the news about the latest IPCC report. This is the UN's Report on Climate Change, the sixth report they've done since 1990, and I think the first one in five years. And if if you've read any articles about it, or if you've read the report, it's certainly sobering. And each of these reports that we've been getting over the years is is clear and gives more dire warnings about about what we're likely facing. And I'll just quote what the what got in in the press a lot was the Secretary General saying that this is code red for humanity. He also said, "The alarm bells are deafening," and that this report must sound a death knell for coal and fossil fuels before they destroy our planet. And it's important to note, the IPCC has 195 member governments that all have to approve the report. And governments are not known for being histrionic and saying things that aren't, don't have a lot of support. They tend to be conservative and pull back and 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 kind of modulate the things that they say. So the fact that you have 195 member governments saying what this report says is really something that we should all sit up and listen to. For me, there there's three key takeaways. One, you know, the changes are already, there are already significant and irreversible changes. And even if we stop all fossil fuel emissions today, it will get worse. And so we need to do what I know we are working on, which is to make adaptations so that we can have a livable city here in Glendale. And I'm glad we're talking about things like water conservation later and and fire prevention and disaster preparation with the CERT program and looking at heat island effect with with increased tree planting and cool surfaces. So I would just encourage us all to push on that because it's coming. It's here and it's coming. The the second, I think, key takeaway is that the window for presenting, preventing catastrophic warming, and this is warming that is so extreme that adaptation may not necessarily be possible, that window for preventing that is 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 closing very, very fast. And so we need major changes now. And and but the good news is we have the technology, or at least most of it, and and so much new technology is coming, especially in the battery area. So we can do what needs to be done. We just need to recognize that we cannot follow business-as-usual approaches to things. We we need to make sometimes uncomfortable decisions, decisions that may affect our convenience, but therefore making sure that ourselves and our children have a have a place that they can live safely in. So I hope we can, all of us, you know, paste this report to the wall, if that's such a thing, and go back to it every time we make a decision on this council, because the game has really, really changed. So that's, you know, I just, given, given that, it's been weighing on me, I think about it every day, and I I I wanted to share that. The the other thing, totally unrelated, but just maybe something we can try to get ahead of is, we know that the eviction moratorium is is coming to an end, I believe at the end of September. I hope I'm right about that. This is the state eviction moratorium. And I, you know, I've been reading, I'm sure you're all reading problems, about problems with getting the state program to cover past due rents. It's there, the money is there. It's just been difficult to get it out. It's been difficult for tenants and landlords, apparently, to apply for it successfully. It sounds like what happened with EDD and the unemployment insurance. So I don't know if there's a way to get ahead of this, to start considering what we might want to do at the end of September if this problem is not sorted out. Do we want to consider extending the moratorium for tenants that, you know, have applied and are waiting for funds to come in? Because what we, what I'm concerned about is, you know, we wouldn't want somebody evicted because the state is unable to pay out the money to cover their rent to the landlord. And I think most landlords would not want that either because they would probably rather get the money. But I I just, I don't know whether there's, what the solution is or if anything is needed. But I would just like to ask, if I could get a second at least, to have staff start to to think about this and maybe bring us, or prepare some options to bring to us if they're needed as we get, we get into September.
Okay, thank you. Who would like to go next?
Is anybody supporting that, or am I just?
Didn't hear anything, Mr. Brotman.
Okay.
Anyone else? Councilmember Najarian, Agajanian, Kasakian?
Okay, if not, I have a couple of things. I've received several positive emails from residents regarding our services and our our staff, and I thought I would share just a couple of them very, very briefly. First of all, one was sent regarding our aquatics program. And kudos to the positive outlet it was and the aquatics team to a member of our community that was caught in the COVID pandemic, of course, and had to stay at home, and she became depressed and, you know, she finally found an outlet with our aquatics program down at the the community center. And so, and she fell in love with the aquatics team. So I just want to send a shout out to Oneg and his staff for, you know, all that you do to to bring some joy to our residents. And that was really nice. And the other one is the kudos go to Public Works, because I also got a, an email very late at night about a tree that had fallen on on Edmonton. And the next thing I knew, I was getting an email from the same person saying how fabulous they were out here, Public Works was here, they cleared the tree out right away, and they were so pleased with the Works Department. And that happened like at 2:30 AM in the morning. So it's not like it was 6 o'clock at night. It was in the middle of the night. So thank you to all of our Public Works staff for for everything that you do. I also want to make an announcement. There's a pop-up health fair and COVID vaccination clinic coming on Wednesday, August 25th. It's going to be right in front of the Galleria. It's, we are in partnership with the Armenian-American Medical Society, which is very active in our community, and the LA Department of Public Health. As I said, it's in front of the Galleria on the other side of the street from the Americana. They will have free screenings, they're going to be, there's going to be education booths. But most importantly, they will be giving the Pfizer and the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccinations. So you can make a reservation or walk-ins are going to be accepted. So please, please, with this Delta variant out there, I I am imploring, especially parents who have kids going back to school, is so important right now to be vaccinated, and if your kids are old enough to get them vaccinated so that they don't get this Delta variant because it is, it is not, it is more dangerous than than the COVID. So please, take advantage. It's on Wednesday evening, August 25th, from 6:00 to 9:00 PM in front of the Galleria. And finally, and this is for staff, I heard from some residents that had problems with one of the, our indigenous trees, the ordinance that we have for our protected trees, and this was concerning an oak tree. And it was the neighbor's tree, and it was growing over into their property, and they couldn't really use, have access to their property. But they had to go, they had to file appeals and go to the building and fire appeals board, et cetera, because the owner of the tree refused to help to get someone in to trim the tree. So what I would ask is that, if I can get a second on this, that we revisit that indigenous tree ordinance and make sure that, you know, in order to permit to prune large branches from a neighbor's protect, protected tree that encroaches on or limits the use of private property, it can be done without requiring the approval of the tree owner if the owner refuses. So, and and maybe it's time we look at that. Maybe there's a, another indigenous tree like the the Adora tree that we'd like to put on this list. But if I can get a second on that one, I would appreciate it. Anyone want to second that one?
I'll second.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll look at that ordinance. And that's it for me. And what's next, please?
It's community event announcement, three-minute portion. I do have a caller, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Let's hear it.
Mike Mohill, you're live. You have three minutes. Mike, go ahead.
Good evening, council. Good evening, council members. My name is Mike Mohill. I'd like to thank council to know that next week we'll be discussing, finally, council districts. I'm looking forward to it. On my subject tonight, I'm going to talk about what I wrote in my community newsletter this past week. It was about a big lie between council members and our city unions. Prior to 2018, taxpayers were spending to CalPERS on average about $20 million. In 2018, taxpayers sent CalPERS $40 million. In 2019, taxpayers sent CalPERS $41 million. In 2020, taxpayers spent CalPERS $55 million. In 2021, taxpayers sent CalPERS $61 million. In 2021, the city of Glendale was obligated to send CalPERS a whopping $95,833,000. The city of Glendale only had $61,144,670. Glendale taxpayers are on the hook for $34,688,330. Glendale city council members' hands are always out for endorsements and campaign money from government unions. Once on council, these elected politicians approve outrageous and unsustainable salaries and retirement pension benefits for the union's supporters, even when they know we don't have the money. We should always vote out incumbent candidates regardless of their party affiliation. Once a candidate is elected, within three months, he becomes corrupt with money, power, or both. They follow the same line as the incumbents and do nothing to change the system. That is why we we highly recommend that we vote out incumbent candidates. Also this past year, $225 million was taken out of Measure S money to pay for the pensions. That money was supposed to be used for roads, sidewalks, senior programs. This budget is out of whack, and why doesn't this council admit and tell the public via the local newspapers, what is my newsletter after doing the reporting? Thank you very much, Glendale residents. Bye now.
Thank you. I just would like to reiterate to Mr. Mohill that Measure S funding is in a special account. Thank you, Councilmember Agajanian. And we do not take any money out of that for pensions, none, zero, zippo. None of Measure S money goes towards pensions. Thank you. What's next?
Next would be action items. 8A, Glendale Water and Power Regarding Implementation of Phase 2 of Mandatory Water Conservation with Applicable Drought Charge and Glendale Water and Power's Water Conservation Programs. One, Resolution Implementing Phase 2 of Mandatory Water Conservation with the Applicable Drought Charge. Two, Motion to Note and File Report on Glendale Water and Power's Water Conservation Programs.
Thank you. Mr. Kekalian?
Good evening, Mayor Devine, members of council. I'm going to turn it over to Michael DeGhetto to provide a presentation to you. But what this staff report is really regarding is three primary issues. The first is proposing that council approve movement over to the Phase 2 of our mandatory water conservation, which essentially would limit watering, outdoor watering to three days a week on on Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays. It'll also implement the drought charge that comes along with the mandatory Phase 2 approach, as well as a request by Councilmember Kasakian from several weeks ago to share with the public all the the various different programs that we have had, both past and present, in terms of helping residents with water conservation measures. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Michael.
Mayor Devine, members of the council, Michael DeGhetto, AGM for Glendale Water and Power. And I'm going to start with just a discussion of our sources of water for the city of Glendale. 30% of our water comes from the San Fernando Basin, which is groundwater that we pump, and that goes through our Glendale Water Treatment Plant, which is part of an EPA Superfund Cleanup Project. About 4% comes from the Verdugo Basin, which is also a groundwater basin. 7% of our water is recycled water that comes from the Lagwork Treatment Plant. And then our total demand, we make up the rest of the demand from purchased water from Metropolitan Water District, which is about 60% of the water that the city uses. Now, the water that comes from Metropolitan Water District comes from two main sources. It comes from the Colorado River Aqueduct and from the State Water Project. And part of climate adaptation is the investments that the city of Glendale and Metropolitan Water District have made for the region in storage, the ability to store water. So currently, the one source, the State Water Project, is a 5% allocation, which means it's really like a 95% cutback from what the region would normally be able to get from the State Water Project. So more water is being pulled from storage on the Colorado River Aqueduct. Now, something that's changed or something that's kind of recent is Department of Water Resources is projecting that there's going to be a 0% allocation on the State Water Project next year. So in in this picture, that would be the green water where it says 207,000 acre feet. That's going to be zero next year. So more water will be, have to be pulled out of the other storage, which would be Diamond Valley Lake and Lake Mead. So the, this is kind of the main reason for coming to council and asking to go to mandatory conservation, is to save more water so we can have some more to use next year. Now, we're always in Phase 1 of Now, we're always in Phase 1 of mandatory conservation, and that's really like our no-water-waste policy. And there's just a list of things that residents and customers, businesses shouldn't be doing. And the one, you know, that I always point out is you shouldn't be watering the sidewalk because there's really no use for doing that. And then there's limits on when irrigation, when you should be irrigating to help minimize evaporation. So the sprinklers aren't on in the middle of the day and things like that. And so what we're recommending is going to Phase 2 of mandatory conservation, where it literally will limit the watering days to three days per week, which will be Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday for no more than 10 minutes at each station. Deferring landscaping projects, except for California-friendly landscaping, and then, of course, all of the other things, like decorative fountains, even now in Phase 1 should have a recirculation system on them. And when you wash your, if you wash a vehicle yourself, you should have a hose with a shut-off nozzle, and if it's at a car wash, they should have a recirculation system there. So one of the things that the city's done has been innovative in using recycled water. Starting in 1976, the reclamation plant was put in service. The first use the city had was in 1978, and then we've made major expansions since then. And I want to point that out because the recycled water is really a drought-proof water source. So these restrictions do not apply to recycled water. So if you're using recycled water at a business, or if you have, Glendale City College has some buildings with dual-flush toilets, things like that, these restrictions don't apply to that. And I thought it was really important to point that out this time because I think last time in 2015, use here also went down. So the watering days and all those restrictions don't apply to this. Now, you know, council is very forward-thinking in adopting our rate structure because it includes a drought charge associated with each phase of conservation. So the reason for that is 60% of the fixed expenses are collected in our variable costs. And so what the drought charge does is it makes up that difference. So customers that conserve water are going to maintain or lower their bills. And in 2015, you know, we really didn't get any complaints from any customers when the drought charge went into effect because for a lot of folks, their bills actually went down. And what it is, is 40 cents extra for every 1,000 gallons of water. And it also prevents large rate increases in the future. A lot of, most agencies don't have a drought charge, so they had to go back afterwards and ask for like 9%, 10% rate increases, whereas, you know, we had 1% and 2%. And, you know, I'm just giving kind of an examples, like we still have to test water quality and ensure its safety, we still have to fix main breaks, and we still have to repair our equipment. So 77% of water use in Glendale's residential, 39% through multifamily, 38% through single-family residents. And then the orange line here is single-family residential, which would be houses, as opposed to, say, apartments or condominiums. During the summer, multifamily use does increase because there's landscaping in multifamily residences as well, but single-family residential use increases by 70%. And that's all landscaping. And for reference, you know, the number of units or dwelling units, which would be like apartments or individual condominiums, there's about 50,000 of those units, and there's 22,000 of the single family, which would be houses. And I wanted to point out also that, because this will come up, sometimes there'll be questions about this, since 2012, we've added 3,300 units, which again would be apartments or condominiums for the most part, but there's actually been a sustained 18% reduction in water use. So at least in Glendale, water can't be pointed to as a reason for not building more units. And the reason the use has gone down has just been more efficient water use. And to give an example, these are, this was usage from these two houses, these are single-family, back in 2013. So the, you know, the house on top in the summer would use 4,500 gallons. The house on the bottom, there's actually a point in the summer where they use 65,000 gallons. So it doesn't even really matter like how many people live in those houses, it's the houses, I would say, that are using the water. And this is why we focus on watering days to get our cutbacks during mandatory conservation. Now, to talk about the programs that we have in place, you know, right now, if you go online and you want to remove your turf, it's $2 per square foot, which is, you know, a really good price point for that. I did that program in 2008, and it was only 75 cents a square foot, so $2 a square foot's pretty good. And it's just because there's a lot of square feet, you know, if you measure your yard, it's usually more square feet than your house. So we've got a $500 rebate for a non-permit gray water system. We've got our smart home upgrades, which includes electric and water upgrades. Water Insight, which is water reports that we send email alert for potential leaks. And our software system monitors that, and it knows when to send out those emails. We've got rebates for clothes washers, dishwashers, and high-efficiency toilets. And these programs are always in place, so, you know, I always direct folks to our webpage because they're incentives, so you would, it would be an incentive to do that even when there's not a drought.
Can I ask a question?
Okay. Councilmember Brotman?
Yeah, just on the last slide there on those programs. I remember during the last drought, there was a lot of promotion around the turf removal program. Do you think it would make sense to do that? Because I'm not sure people, you know, remember it's out there, and, you know, just announcing it here on council and the other normal, you know, social media may not be enough. You know, that's, that's one question. And then, could you explain a little bit more what you mean by non-permit gray water system?
Mayor Devine, Councilmember Brotman. Well, to give you an idea of how successful the turf rebate program has been, during that shortage in 2015, we had 407 customers took advantage of it, and we removed nearly 2.3 million square feet of turf. So that's just in Glendale. So it has been a very successful program, and I would imagine that folks are still aware of it. Applications still come in to MWD that runs that program, and they, and sometimes end up with a waiting list for folks, but the board usually funds it enough so people can continue to do that.
So we're not seeing a tapering off of the demand?
There hasn't been.
With application levels?
No, there hasn't been. And because of that, you know, we continue to save 73 million gallons a year in water use because of, because of that program. As far as the non-permit required, there's more than one type of gray water system, and this is a very simple system that you don't have to get a permit for because it just intercepts water basically from like the washing machine and it goes into a planter. Whereas there are much more complicated systems where you have to get a permit to help ensure that you're not hooking to the wrong part of your sewer system in your house and trying to use the water. And this program that we have is exactly the same as the program that City of Pasadena Hopefully that answers.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, and I'll just add, you have to be very careful with this because you're tapping into your sewer system in your home. So there's more than one level of the type, and we're only given a rebate on this non-permit And then in addition to all those programs, we have all of these links that give you good examples of really like the, a more appropriate type of planting or garden that you would want to have at your house for basically the climate that we live in here in Glendale. There's links to Theodore Payne, where you can just look at an extensive list of plants, and it'll really tell you, you know, what kind goes on a slope, what kind blooms at certain times, how much water each type needs to have, what color they are, you know, and how big they get, which is really important. I've planted a few that got much bigger than I thought they were going to get. And then just things about how to program your irrigation controller. You know, we found last time that a lot of folks, you know, have trouble kind of visualizing how to program their controller and which zones, because there's multiple zones and times and days and things like that. So we have, we have good information on that there on our webpage as well. And then, could I take any questions?
I have a question for you, Mr. DeGhetto. Some people might have the, have installed low-water irrigation systems like drip irrigation and NetFIM, Netaphim, and are they, they need longer watering times? Are they exempt from this ordinance or from this phase?
Mayor Devine, yes, they are. And Netaphim's a brand of drip irrigation, and, but it doesn't matter the kind of brand. If you have installed a drip irrigation system, you do get an exemption for the watering time. Because essentially what happens, I mean, if you think about it, it's called drip, but it's, it would, for the most part, need to run longer because it's just dripping onto the plant. It's not just spraying everywhere, like on a lawn, so.
And what about, and I had asked you about the staggering the watering, like one day do the garden, next day do the landscape?
So the code doesn't allow that because we try and really pay attention to who's following the rules. So it's Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays. So my recommendation would be if you're going to stagger it, you still have all those hours of the day that aren't in the middle of the day, that you can kind of stagger your zones that way.
All right. Anyone else? Thank you for that report.
Yes, I have a, I just have a question.
Go ahead.
So that whole turf, in light of what Mr. Brotman just told us about the IPCC, is, do we want to encourage taking turf, removing natural carbon dioxide absorbing material and putting a rock garden or cactus? I mean, that's a, I don't know. I want to ask Mr. Brotman, what do you think about that? I mean, that's...
Well, I'm not a scientist, but I think if you're replacing the turf with other plant, other living material, then that's, yeah, replacing with rocks, you know, yeah, I get what you're saying.
Yeah. Okay. The second question is regarding the non-permit gray water system. Do you have that equipment? I mean, I imagine it's the, it's the water, it's the washing machine drain hose that you somehow connect and direct it outside to your garden. Do you have that equipment, or is that something we would have to purchase ourselves? How does that work?
Mayor Devine, Councilmember Nijarian, that's something you'd have to purchase yourself. It's kind of a do-it-yourself sort of thing. We don't have that equipment.
And there's a rebate for that, you say?
A $500 rebate. And you would show that you purchased it and put it in?
I think it's not that expensive. I think it's less than $50 probably for a decent length of hose.
And you would, you would collect your receipts for the, there's like...
If there's any plumbing or anything else.
There's like perforated pipe that you would put in the planter. So there are some pieces that you need for it.
I see. Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, Madam Mayor.
Yes. Councilmember Kasaki, go ahead.
Sure. Thank you for bringing this part back. I do think that it's important that we take these drastic measures, and even if it impacts, its impacts of these measures may be skewed towards mostly the homeowners. We know that a lot of the water that's wasted is in watering lawns. We've made some significant interroads since the last time we were in these conditions, but I think that if you drive around the city, you see that there's great room for improvement. I think a couple of, out of the ordinary wet seasons lulled us into a false sense of, well, lulled us back into our old bad habits. So one of the things I would like to ask in addition to this is, what was alluded to in terms of doing some more concerted outreach and education? I think that if you're a homeowner and you've had a lawn or you inherited a lawn when you bought your house, it may be slightly intimidating to want to take the big step of tearing it out and replacing it with something else, at least your lawn on the front side, or maybe it's the backside, whichever one you decide. And so a couple of ideas come to mind. One is, we have the Theodore Payne Foundation just north of us in Sunland, which specializes in drought-tolerant and local xeriscate plants. To coordinate with them, to have opportunities where we partner with them and give out seedlings, saplings, give out plants or seeds to residents as a way of promoting the idea of growing more local and drought-tolerant plants that are comfortable and can sustain the hot, dry seasons in this area. In addition to that, I know that there's been workshops done, but if we can maybe do some more workshops, especially at a time when this will be at the forefront of people's minds when we add this added fee. And in addition, also, if we can work, have, I know that we do a lot of videos, people use social media on YouTube and Facebook to share information. You know, let's feature some of the nicer examples of xeriscaped, more sustainable, drought-tolerant front yards. I think if people see examples of what's out there and they see something they like, they may want to replicate it, and there's nothing wrong with that, I think we should promote that. So, you know, in the past, we've done, you know, community awards for the most nicely-decorated home for Halloween, or whatever the case is. I know that there've been those kinds of competitions through Neighborhood Services. Why not do that and recognize some of the folks that have done an exceptional job of saving water and using local plants and featuring those and have them give us a tour of their gardens? I think that if we can inject it into dialogue and conversation, we'll start seeing some progress. And if nothing else, we're getting information out there. I know I asked about the costs of rebates and prices, and you answered those during the briefings, and I appreciate that. And of course, if there's any ways to make sure that we are helping get the information out about water conservation to landlords, but also tenants, we have 67% of our residents who are renters, and letting folks know what they can do as well to participate in making sure that we're all conserving water, that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Mayor, I do have two callers, three callers on the line for this item.
Okay. Let's hear them.
Mike Mohill, you have three minutes. Go ahead, Mike.
Good evening, council members. My name is Mike Mohill. I have a couple, I have a one primary question. You know, when we had the drought restrictions last night and they asked us to submit if you tore up your lawn, well, I tore up my lawn, and when I submitted my, the cost of what it cost me to turn it in, the state ran out of money. So does that mean that I can just resubmit that same paperwork? Because that's the first question. Madam Mayor, I'd like, with your permission, address the Measure S question that was brought up during the oral communication portion.
No. I'm sorry, Mike. I'm sorry, Mike. Maybe later on, or maybe next week, but let's stick to the agenda right now, please.
Okay. Not a problem.
Mr. DeGhetto, would you like to answer his question?
Mayor Devine, I would say if you took out your turf and didn't get a rebate last time, I would submit. I mean, the worst that would happen is you get told no again, because definitely metropolitan, you know, contracts that out as far as keeping track of all that, so they keep track of every address. And if you've already been paid out, they wouldn't approve it, but give it a try.
Because hopefully they can find my paperwork that I submitted several years back.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Mohill. Next caller?
Ms. Valentine, you have three minutes. Go ahead.
Yes.
Yes. Hi. Good evening, Mr. DeGhetto. I have two major concerns. One, do you have an emergency at your water treatment plant? This morning, warm water was, came to the Sycamore Canyon. Somewhere in Glendale, the water is being boiled. Are you aware of that? And number two, very big concern that every day I ingest humongous amount of sediment with my cup of coffee. Is, do you, where is the hot water coming in? I've been here for many years. This morning, when we turned on the sprinklers, the water came hot to the house. Thank you.
Ms. Valentine, Ms. Valentine, I, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but that's not on the agenda either. And so I would ask that Mr. DeGhetto, maybe you can get back to Ms. Valentine about her questions.
I'm worried about the bacteria breeding. That's all.
We, we, okay, we understand that. He's going to get in touch with you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next caller.
Monica Campagna. Monica? You have three minutes.
Hello. Thank you. Good evening, city council members. I just wanted to call in to support your efforts to save water here in our city and with the restrictions you're considering. And I just wanted to mention with regards to the gray water systems, the, the organization I'm part of, Glendale Environmental Coalition, we just had a workshop with Laura Allen of Gray Water Action, and I'd encourage people listening to go check out that on our website, G E C dot E C O, which will be posted this week because she talks all about how to install your gray water systems yourself and where to get more resources for that. When I called in to find out about it from my own home, it, it, from Gray Water Corp, it was a $2,000 job. So I think learning how to do it yourself might be the way to go. And I would hope maybe next year our G W P might consider doing what Pasadena did, which is they actually covered the full installation and had some help with getting it installed done. And then lastly, I'd just like to say I encourage all our residents to consider transforming their, their yards to California native plants. They're absolutely beautiful. You'll have such a more exciting yard that way. You'll see so many more butterflies and hummingbirds and it's, they're beautiful plants. You can go to Theodore Payne, as our water guru has described, and they have garden tours and you can get inspired. And no, it doesn't have to be rocks and practices. There's so much more out there and I encourage everybody to discover what was, what we have here, the plant palette that we have. Thank you guys so much. Have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you, Monica. Any other calls?
Madam Mayor, that was the last caller for this item.
Okay. My final comment on this particular item is, I think, one of the, the most important statements in this report, and that is that G W P and its customers have been leaders in water use efficiency and water conservation. And I am saying to the residents, thank you for making us leaders in conservation and I hope that you will keep it up. If you need more information, you know you can always contact G W P, go to our websites and get any information. And Monica just told you how to get, how to put one of those gray water systems in and how to find out how to do it. So hopefully we'll continue with our, our leadership in this, in this effort. Do I have a, a motion for this item?
I'll move the item.
Second?
Second. Second.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, there are two items. There's a resolution at 8A1 and a motion at 8A2. So it's noting in the filing, the report, and then the resolution at 8A1 is implementing the Phase Two mandatory water conservation.
Right. Okay. So Mr. Bratman, you're.
Yeah, I'll move both items, the note and file, the, and the resolution.
One and two. Thank you. And the second came from?
Me, myself.
Artie.
Mr. Kasakian. All right. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Akajanian.
Yes.
Bratman.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
And Mayor Devine.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you all. What's next, please?
Next item would be Management Services regarding ordinance regulating the use of disposable foodware accessories. One motion directs staff to prepare an ordinance to regulate the use of disposable foodware accessories.
Thank you. Mr. DeGhetto.
Thank you, Mayor Devine, members of council. This particular item is actually a bit of an offshoot from an earlier ordinance that the council was presented with and approved. That was the single-use plastics ordinance several months ago. At that time, there was a request to look into a skip-the-stuff ordinance as well that dealt with single-use plastic utensils at, at restaurants. This request was made by Councilmember Bratman and that was back in January. It's taken a bit of time to get here, but that's only because we've been following what the County of Los Angeles was doing with respect to their ordinance. And once we learned what that was, as well as what the City of L.A. had been doing, the item was presented to our Sustainability Commission. And finally, now we're here at council to present all those findings to you. With that, I'm going to turn it over to David Jones, our Sustainability Officer, to provide this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you very much. So as John said, I'm going to give a little bit of a history about previous actions on this item, then talk a little bit specifics about what a skip-the-stuff provision is, and then be available to answer any questions that council may have. So as Mr. Detective Tonyan said, back in January 26th, city council asked staff to review disposable foodware accessories, also known as skip-the-stuff provisions. And at that time, you directed staff to bring the skip-the-stuff provision to the Sustainability Commission so they could weigh in and have input on this item from some of the subject matter experts that are on that commission. So we didn't wait until the June 3rd Sustainability Commission meeting to bring this item to them. The reason we waited is because we wanted to see what L.A. County was doing within this space, as well as what the City, City of Los Angeles was doing within this space. So we informed the Sustainability Commission about what was happening in those areas. And then they asked us to go back and take a look at, you know, the, the ordinance that the City of Los Angeles was going to pass and the ordinance that the County of Los Angeles was going to pass. And they specifically asked us to do a comparison analysis, to look between the two ordinances and also to look what the city was doing. They felt that they needed that information in order for them to have an educated discussion on this item. So we came back to the Sustainability Commission in July 1st with that information. The Sustainability Commission reviewed the staff report and made a number of recommendations about how we should proceed. Within those recommendations, the Sustainability Commission did suggest that we proceed looking more towards the ordinance language that the City of Los Angeles had come up with as opposed to the County of Los Angeles. Also, at that time, they wanted us to make sure that we included food trucks in the provision and there was an exemption for healthcare facilities and also that notices would be required in food establishments if we're going to go forward with this ordinance. So I'm just going to review quickly what a skip-the-stuff provision is. In essence, we are regulating the distribution of disposable foodware accessories. In other words, these items would only be available if a customer requested them at the point of sale or when they received, or when they ordered something online. So the objective of this is to try and reduce unnecessary waste, also reduce costs. If food service establishments don't have to provide these items every time, there may be potential cost savings for them not having to purchase these items. And also, we want to continue to reduce the use of single-use plastics. As John just mentioned, we did pass the prohibition of using polystyrene single-use plastics within the city at city managed events, city run concessions, so we wanted to be able to grow on that. Good work. So what kind of items are we talking about when we're talking about skipping the stuff? So we're talking about disposable foodware accessories. And these items are things like utensils, straws, stirrers, condiment packagers, splash sticks. Those items that, you know, when you go and order something, they get put in the bag or when you order online, they get brought to your house as part of that service. So who would this, who'd be affected potentially by this provision? So it'd be food and beverage providers located within the City of Glendale and third-party delivery services and online orders. And would potentially affect dining customers, drive-through customers, and takeout customers who generally receive these items when they do these transactions. So what are we talking about when we're talking about a skip-the-stuff requirement? Basically, what we're saying is you only receive these items when you request them. If you don't request them, you will not receive them. Also, there is the issue of disposable foodware accessory dispensers. These dispensers you often see if you go to an establishment where you may put together a salad or buy a sandwich and then on checkout, you'll see a dispenser and you'll click on whether you want a knife or fork or a spoon to go with your, your food and you take that out with you. So the recommendation is that those dispensers are not readily available and that the customer would have to ask for those items as opposed to just like clicking on those things. But a drive-through customer or delivery customer, the food provider may ask those customers if they would like a foodware disposable item. So one of the other key requirements we're looking at is opt-in requirements. Due to what's happened through the pandemic, more and more people have ordered online or ordered directly from restaurants and done takeout. This, we think this behavior will, will continue. So we have an opt-in requirement where the customer would essentially have to opt in to get those foodware accessory items as part of their order. So how would we do that? Those online ordering platforms or the restaurants themselves who do direct online would have a list of items that are available so you could see what you'd want to choose. And then when you're doing the ordering process, checkout, you'd have to click, say you want those specific items. So you'd have to opt in to get those items. And if you didn't opt in, it'd be a default requirement that those items would not be given to you as part of your takeout order or delivery order. And as part of takeout orders too, we would encourage those food service establishments to have bulk delivery of items like the large ketchup containers where you squeeze the top and you put it into a packet as opposed to into a little container, excuse me, as opposed to having individual packets. So again, it's, it's making the customer want to ask for the item as opposed to the item being automatically given to the customer. And then finally, it's obviously there's safety requirements where, you know, where you may order a hot item, a hot liquid. Obviously, a lid would be provided in that circumstance. If you ordered multiple items on like a, on a tray to avoid spillage during transportation and everything, you know, the food establishments would be able to provide the lids and other food disposal accessories that will account for that health and safety. One of the things we understand is that we would want to do a fairly extensive education and outreach campaign with this ordinance if it were to be passed. And that would consist of currently virtual workshops, but hopefully in person, going to speak to food service establishments, doing social media campaigns, explaining potentially the ordinance. And then also as part of this, we'll be mailing flyers and notices to all food service establishments, explaining what the ordinance is, and they would have to display those. So they'll know what's going wrong with the ordinance. But also when customers come in, they'll be able to see that, okay, this is an ordinance of the city, so this is why the food service establishment may not be providing me these items. So it's to get it out into the public and to make sure people know why we're doing this ordinance and what the potential benefits are. As just mentioned, we'd want to, we'd suggest doing a 90-day outreach and education campaign. Then after that, Phase Two, what we call large food and beverages with 26 or more employees, would, they'll be the first ones to have to adhere to the potential ordinance. And then after that, any food and beverage, service beverage provider under 26 employees would then have to adhere to the ordinance. So the alternative that we put in front of council is council can direct staff to prepare for adoption the proposed disposable foodware accessories-only ordinance presented by the staff and the staff report. Alternative two, council may recommend adopting the Los Angeles County version of the single-use foodware accessories upon request ordinance and use that language. Alternative three is council may consider postponing the adoption of the ordinance and let staff go out there and speak to food service establishments, maybe get their feedback and their input into this ordinance and then come back to council. Or council may consider any other alternative not presented by staff at this time. And with that, I'll be available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, for that report and to the Sustainability Committee Commission for weighing in on this. We appreciate it. Comments from council? Do we have any phone calls before I take questions?
Yes, we do, Mayor. I'm waiting for the entire name to pop up on my screen. Oh, there it is. I have one caller for that.
Okay. Well, let's let the, let's listen to the callers now and then we'll get the questions. Thank you. Go ahead.
Elise Kalfayan, you have three minutes, Elise. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Devine and council members and staff. This is Elise Kalfayan. I am a member of the Glendale Environmental Coalition and I want to thank the city for bringing this forward. And I also want to thank the Sustainability Commission for all of the work that they did on this ordinance. They really went over it thoroughly and they wanted to make sure that the L.A. city ordinance, which was more strict, was the one that Glendale would adhere to, which makes sense. L.A. is a very large city, so that actually covers a lot more than just unincorporated L.A. County. We are especially appreciative of the fact that we're trying to train people to just not use single-use plastics. So not having that disposable foodware just out for people to grab when they, when they pick up their takeout food is great. And it's great that they can just be prompted to, that vendors can be prompted to ask the customer for disposable foodware accessories. So we really appreciate this and hope the city council will approve the strictest ordinance possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Kalfayan. Next.
Madam Mayor, that was the only caller at this time for this item.
Okay. All right. Go ahead, Mr. Bratman.
Yeah. So I wanted to just ask if David would clarify a couple of things that I think I understand, but I want to make sure everybody understands in the public. The difference between the City of L.A. Mucko and the L.A. County, I understand that it's really two things. One has to do with whether the self-serve stations are allowed and the other has to do with prompting. I think in L.A. City, they've specifically said that food service vendors can't proactively prompt their customer. They can't say, do you want? They have to kind of hang back and, and require the customer to ask for it. Can you clarify that those are the two key differences between these ordinances?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Bratman. Yes, that is correct. So in the City of L.A., they, there are no dispensers. The County of Los Angeles allows dispensers with the exception of straws. Straws are not allowed to be dispensed. And regarding offering disposable foodware accessories, within the city ordinance, they may ask drive-through or delivery customers if they want any disposable foodware accessories. Within the county, they say nothing in this chapter prohibits, sorry. Yeah. So in the county, they say there's nothing that prohibits them from asking a customer if they would like those items. And there's one other difference too, is in terms of included as part of a prepackaged item. In the city ordinance, they say if you get like a prepackaged juice box with a straw, that is obviously allowed. In the county ordinance, they say if you get a prepackaged item with a food service and straw, that's. that's obviously allowed. Also, if you get prepackaged salads and those type of items with food service wear accessories, those items are allowed. But those, yes, are in essence the two differences.
Okay. So anyway, I, you know, I do support what we're doing and thank the Sustainability Commission, and thank you, David. I think you brought it to the commission twice. Once they looked over it and they had, they wanted you to go and do a little more research on the differences between the city and county, and you did that, and you came back to them. So appreciate the thoroughness there. And their recommendation is that we go with the, with the city version. The, a couple, just a couple, you know, asks is, one, I definitely would like to have you come back after six months and tell us, give us, give us a sense of how this is going, any complaints, and any, any issue with, you know, with relooking at the fines. Because I do know, you know, the fines are very, very low. We certainly don't want people just assuming that this is a cost of doing business. So I, you know, I'm okay with the low level of fines. I think probably the main thing is getting, getting the word out, and people will comply. But I would like to see you come back after six months. If you think you have enough data at the end of six months, if it takes longer, you know, but definitely come back and let us know whether those, you know, whether, whether the outreach has been working, whether the fines are working, and what you think about it. One, I have, I have two pet peeves that are kind of a little bit outside of what you've proposed that I wanted to see if we could address, include. So one of them is, and you probably all know, if you walk into, let's say Coffee Bean, you order a coffee, and you want to sit there and drink it, before you get a chance, I mean, they don't ask you whether you want to have it there or whether you want it to go. They just automatically put it in a to-go cup with a plastic lid. And it just drives me crazy when I'm there, you know, I even will sometimes say, "Can you put it in a ceramic cup?" And they'll say, "Oh, well, we don't have any ceramic cups," or "They're not clean," or something like that. Or they may say, "Yes, we'll put it in a ceramic cup." And then I go to pick up the coffee, and it's in a, it's in a takeout with a top. And I say, "Oh, but I want it in a ceramic cup." And they say, "Yes, sir, we're happy to do that." And they'll pour it in the ceramic cup and throw the takeaway stuff out. So it really defeats the purpose. I would like to see if we could do something where we, we say, you know, if, you know, these, especially these chain coffee shops, should ask whether people are dining in, and should ask whether they would be willing to take their drink in a, in a ceramic cup, in a, you know, in a reusable cup. That's, that's just one thing. And the other thing is that a lot of restaurants now are not allowing people to bring in their own containers for takeout. And my understanding is that AB 619, which was passed, I don't know, some years ago, says that restaurants are allowed. But I think a lot of restaurants think that with COVID, they're not allowed. They say that the Department of Public Health doesn't allow it. I asked John Tectalian to check into it, and it seems like the Department of Public Health does allow it. And it's, it's not a source of COVID transmission. So maybe we could get the word out to the restaurants anyway that this is not prohibited by Department of Public Health.
Councilmember Broughton, just sorry, just for a point of clarification regarding the offer. In the L.A. County ordinance, they say nothing in this chapter prohibits a food facility that is providing ready-to-eat food to customers from asking the customers that they would like to be provided any single-use foodware accessories. Whereas the city says, "May ask a drive-through customer or delivery customer only." So I just wanted to make that clarification.
Thank you. Councilmember Agajanian.
Yes, I have a suggestion. I would like to see that we go ahead and on this issue, to come up with six months of outreach first, before we go and penalize people who are small store owners. It's very clear to me that In-N-Out Burger, McDonald's, they can adapt themselves very quickly. But there are smaller stores we have in Glendale that there is one owner and one employee who's working, and those employees are changing. I mean, today, they have an employee. Six months later, somebody else comes in. Two months later, another person comes in. And it's very hard to be that restrictive as L.A. City is more strict on this issue and follow their rules and regulations will be harder for small business owners. So I would like to see, first, we go ahead with somehow outreach. And then the L.A. County's regulation after that. And then at a later time, go ahead with Los Angeles City, which is more strict, to go ahead, like step by step, rather than jumping to the very strict way of applying this issue. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Kusakian.
I, I support Councilmember Agajanian's suggestion to do an education and outreach effort first, followed by an implementation of the county's regulations. And I think that there's some reasons why that would work specifically for Glendale versus jumping straight into the Los Angeles City model. And then eventually, after we're able to assess the response to, over time, however long it is, we can gauge that based on the success of it, eventually get to the city of L.A. model. You know, I think that Councilmember, my colleague, Dan Broughton's anecdote about the Coffee Bean, just if nothing else, illustrates how difficult this is going to be. Even though I know he's a very clear communicator, not everyone is going to be quick on the uptake and understand necessarily how this will work. You're going to have mistakes made. I don't want to see businesses penalized. I don't want to see them in any way or form, especially at a time when we're seeing restaurants just barely now come back. And in fact, the discussion we're going to have immediately following this is going to be tied into what we're doing to try and help restaurants survive in this pandemic. You know, I can only imagine, by the way, if, and I do like the idea of initially having people prompt and offer some utensils or whatever it may be. Because as this discussion was going on, especially about the coffee, and I saw that one of the items on, in the report and on this list was sleeves for drinks. The infamous McDonald's hot coffee case just simply comes to mind. And I don't know if that was something taken into consideration when talking about sleeves. But for those who are maybe unaware, there was an instance, and perhaps our legal counsel will tell me that there's more to this story. I know that there's two sides to this, but individuals who had coffee spilled on them because either of a lid or whatever the case may be, the coffee was allegedly too hot, causing burns and resulting in one of the most famous legal cases of our twentieth, recent 20th century. And in addition to that, I don't want to see the negative Yelp reviews starting to pour in as people are forced to be mum in terms of dispensing utensils or, or just something like a coffee sleeve on a very hot cup of coffee. I've tried to hold one of those cups without a sleeve, I can assure you. And not everyone's heat tolerance is the same. It can be difficult. So that would be my suggestion, and seconding Councilmember Agajanian's, to take a measured step approach with the eventual goal of getting to where we want to be and where our commission has suggested. But I think right now, we're in a pandemic. I don't know how many people necessarily want to share ceramic mugs, no matter how good our faith is in the ability of people to clean it or in takeout delivery or whatever, or pickups it may be. So let's be measured and cautious and move forward in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. So you and Councilmember Agajanian are for alternative number two. Okay, Councilmember Najarian.
Yeah, I think, I don't know how we got into this ceramic mud versus paper mug. I don't think that's directly before us. But, and correct me if I'm wrong. Yeah, I think the difference between the L.A. County ordinance and the L.A. City ordinance is very minor. There's nothing I hate more, and I really feel a little guilty when I get takeout food and there's a bunch of these plastic forks with cellophane. I mean, I, I say, what a waste this is. So listen, I say, let's go for it. If we're going to do this thing, let's go L.A. City. Let's have a three-month, 90-day education period, and let's just jump in it. I think we'll learn. We can, we can handle this. This isn't that, this isn't that difficult for residents of Glendale and the businesses to, to get right.
Well, well, thank you, thank you, Councilmember Najarian. And I, I feel the businesses will be happy because they're going to save money and not have to purchase all of this plastic and, and, you know, these utensils that we're talking about. I want to say that I'm very happy to see this come to council because I actually brought this up about two years ago. So it's been a little bit of a long run, but hip, hip, hooray. I'm glad we're here. I am also for alternative number two, and let's get the ball rolling. I think it's fantastic. Saves the landfill and a lot of other conservation ethical issues. So do I have a motion for the item?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, can I just clarify one thing for, for, to Councilmember Agajanian and Kusakian's comments? I don't know if you saw in the report that this would not go into effect for four months. There would be a, I believe it is 120-day outreach process. And then there are two warnings before any penalties are assessed. So it's not as if somebody is just going to start getting penalized without really a lot of, of forewarning. So I think, to me, that, that I think should address the concerns. It's not like we're going to have this thing just immediately go into effect, and we're slapping big fines on people. We don't want to do that, and, and we won't be doing that. I, I hope that, I hope that makes it, makes it seem more palatable.
I, I understand that, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Broughton. I also was not anticipating an increased use of Styrofoam and plastics a year ago. But then we had COVID-19, and we had indoor dining shut down, and we all had rallying cries to support our local restaurants. And unfortunately, from everything, from face masks to empty hand sanitizer containers to a number of other things, have taken unfortunate, immediate, more immediate precedent over some of the other issues. Until we have some sense of where we are with this pandemic and where restaurants may be, and what the concerns are in the coming months regarding the Delta variant, I am not comfortable with just that specific or hard line of a period of outreach education.
Mr. Jones, I'd like to, thank you, Mr. Kusakian. I'd like to ask Mr. Jones a question. Phase one of the ordinance is 90-day outreach. Phase two, it says, within 120 days. Now, does that mean that it will be in effect in 120 days? Not 90 days of outreach and then 120 days after that?
Yes, the intent is to have it in effect within 120 days.
Okay, that's good.
Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, before we move on, I do have a caller. She's been waiting on the line. Councilmembers were discussing this while she was waiting on the line.
All right, let's hear from her.
Monica Campagna.
Monica.
You have three minutes, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening again, Councilmembers, Mayor Devine, city staff. I'm sorry to interject into your conversation. I just wanted to mention one thing. In my humble opinion, putting something out there and then trying to change it later is just going to confuse everybody even more. In my opinion, you should start off strong and take the time to educate the business owners over that 90-day period, three months. And then, you know, you can set a, a, a point where you, where you start, you know, finding people as far down the road as you want. But having dealt with children at an elementary school about this issue and working with staff at GUSD on this issue, it is so difficult. And just clear messaging is, I think, so important. And this issue is so terrible that we really need to take it seriously and change behaviors now because it's, it's not going to get any better. I do appreciate how hard restaurants have it right now. So that's why I'm saying I suggest an education campaign and then fade into a, any kind of repercussions for not eventually following the protocol. That's my input. Thank you for listening. Bye-bye.
Thank you, thank you. Do I have a motion for this?
Yes, I was going to move this item based on alternative two.
All right, thank you.
Wait. Let's be clear on alternative two, if we could.
Okay. It is the adopting the ordinance once staff have completed the 90-day outreach and education.
City or county?
Actually.
We get to choose city or county ordinance.
I would rather see county because to go step by step rather than jump to something. Because small business owners, it takes time. They don't know, they are not following these issues. I mean, it's not like, as I said, you know, like McDonald's or Burger King or In-N-Out. A small business owner, they, by the time they hear about this, it's six months past, three months past.
Mayor Devine?
Yes.
Yeah, I, do you, I just want to make sure you understand that we're dividing the implementation also between large and small operators. So it goes into effect in 120 days for, for large, which is 26 employees.
Right.
It goes into effect for small after, I think it's five, 150 days. Those are for restaurants that are less than 26 employees.
Right.
And, and, and remember again, there are two warnings. So, you know, if we adopt the ordinance, I mean, now, or once, once staff develops it, we adopt the ordinance, we can do this 90-day or 120-day outreach, right? We can do the outreach until it comes into effect. And that's what I would really like to see us do, whether it's the L.A. County or the L.A. City. I, I mean, the differences are not big. If it, if it makes people more comfortable to follow the county one, I can live with that. But I would like to see us implement the ordinance now, go through the, go through the education, and then have it go into effect as staff has recommended.
And, and I would agree with that. I think we should take the Sustainability Commission's recommendation, pass the ordinance tonight, and then the businesses, food, they have 120 days to, to put this into effect. So I agree with that.
So what happened to my alternative two?
Madam Mayor, wait, just a point of order.
Yes.
The item before us is to give direction to staff to prepare the ordinance. So this discussion that we're having, fine-tuning it, city, county, can be, perhaps can be held immediately before the vote on the ordinance next week or the week after. I, I support, I mean, just, just so we're clear, you know, I think I made my feelings clear. It appears as though we have two different camps, but we don't have to, we're not going to vote on that today. We're going to ask staff to come back with something, but it certainly can be modified at that time.
You're absolutely right, Councilmember Najarian. Thank you. So we need a motion to direct staff to prepare an ordinance to regulate the use of disposable food.
Okay, I would like to move the item.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Broughton?
Yes.
Kusakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Devine.
Yes, and thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is HC, Community Development Regarding Montrose Shopping Park, Alfresco Dining Locations. One Resolution Amending Emergency Public Order Pertaining to Alfresco Dining in Montrose Shopping Park's Eliminate Removal Date Following Labor Day and Extend Alfresco Dining Through October 31st, 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Tectalian.
Thank you, Mayor Devine. I think the title, I was just reading the record, pretty much encapsulates what this report's all about. So I'm just going to turn it directly over to Bradley Calvert from our Community Development Department.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. We are coming back to discuss the Montrose Shopping Park Alfresco Dining Locations. If you recall, on May 25th, we had come to council to discuss the future of the Alfresco Dining Program. Staff had conducted a survey to determine kind of user satisfaction, business satisfaction, and then alternatives for potentially a long-term strategy to move forward with. At that time, we had received comments from the public, survey results, a number of different comments that were asking to that were asking to consider downtown and Montrose separately at that time. So, council directed staff to remove the Alfresco locations in Montrose following Labor Day. And really, this was over concerns related to parking and impacts to retail businesses. But to maintain the downtown Alfresco locations in place through October, and during that time, to develop a long-term solution. If you recall, we had run a survey to, again, ask for user, customer, and business satisfaction. We had asked users or survey respondents if they were interested in seeing Alfresco be a long-term solution and feature. 81% of respondents had said yes, including 82% of residents and 74% of businesses. So, this was important to acknowledge that this has been a very popular program. And through this survey, approximately 90% of the respondents had used a location in Montrose. During this period, following council's direction on May 25, we had engaged with MSPA and business owners to discuss the future predominantly around Honolulu Avenue. What could be the next steps following the removal of the Alfresco locations? We had discussed a number of alternatives. This included the extension of sidewalks, modifying existing seating areas and parkway areas. But through these conversations, we also realized that these ideas and these alternatives just were not feasible due to budget. We had a limited budget to work with to extend this program, but also time. If we were going to remove these Alfresco locations following Labor Day, this, both of these concepts could take several years. They require a hefty financial investment, and it didn't seem as a reasonable replacement to the current Alfresco program. We also conducted a walking tour with the MSPA. And that was important because I think it gave everyone an opportunity to kind of visualize what that long-term strategy could look like. Right now, a lot of those Alfresco locations take up four, six, maybe more parking spaces in some locations. A long-term program does not need to be that impactful. It can be smaller. We also discussed the depth of the parking spaces, the ability to create these kind of elongated parklets rather than things that were wider that took up more parking spaces. Ultimately, what was determined that if we move forward with a long-term strategy, we could actually go from using four or six spaces down to two, potentially restoring at least half of the parking that is actually out there while still maintaining relatively the same amount of seating area for the Alfresco locations. Some of these long-term strategies could look like this example. We also have another example from San Diego. These tend to be larger than probably what we're considering, but I think they also do a good job of kind of illustrating the quality of what these parklets could look like as we move forward to something that is longer term rather than the K rails and kind of tables and umbrellas that are currently installed. They can include weather protection. They can include railings, different sidings, different materials, things of that nature. And we had asked during that survey period, do the respondents aspire this program to be something that's a little more aesthetically pleasing, a little more aesthetically enhancing, but something that's just more attractive for the neighborhood? Nearly 88% of all respondents said yes, including 87.5% of residents and over 90% of businesses thought that this would be a good, appropriate solution. So, from that, and these discussions that we've had with the Montrose Shopping Park Association, businesses within Montrose, is what we're asking council to reconsider from the fall or the earlier direction to remove the K rails after Labor Day is to actually maintain the existing locations until October 11. Now, this is different from the materials that are in your packet. This discussion came about after the report had been published and discussion with the MSPA about their events that are coming up. That would give an opportunity to, one, leave these in place longer, especially now, as we know that the variant is causing higher rates of infection, probably a greater desire to be outdoors. But then, it also respects the events that will be in place in late October that may need that space. During this time, we would include the MSPA along with the DGA as part of developing these long-term design solutions. That's something that we plan to return to council with in late September, early October on what that prototype design could look like. Just for a quick update, we have had a discussion with the design consultants. They're currently working with about four different vendors who can create a kit-apart system that would allow us to have a rapid deployment of this program, hopefully sometime in November. That way, we wouldn't have a large gap between removal of K rails and then replacement with the new parklets. And then also to aesthetically enhance downtown from the current situation. Pending the outcome of this discussion with council tonight, if the direction is to include MSPA in this long-term strategy, leave these K rails in place until October 11, we would work with the MSPA to draft a joint letter and announcement to the community, particularly since we are hearing from a number of businesses and residents who are wondering what this program is going to look like, what is the future ever going to be. The other ask that is in this report, and this was a discussion that stemmed from the walking tour. We were looking at seating areas, parkways that are, you know, sometimes oddly configured, extra wide, spaces that could be used maybe for better uses, essentially. So, through those discussions with the MSPA, the idea was to develop a long-term urban design plan for Honolulu Avenue. So, part of that request is to also start engaging with the MSPA to develop that plan. So, before you have two, or really, three alternatives, the first is to modify this ordinance to maintain the existing Alfresco locations through October 11 while developing a long-term parklet strategy and to also develop a long-term urban design strategy for Honolulu Avenue. Alternative two would be to not modify the emergency ordinance and to maintain the initial direction from council to remove the Alfresco locations following the Labor Day holiday. And number three, council may consider any alternative not proposed by staff. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Calvert. Do we have any phone calls on this?
Madam Mayor, not on this item, but I do have a person waiting for oral communication.
Okay, all right. Then, let's hear from my colleagues.
I would like to move the item based on alternative one.
Any other comments? Councilmember Rotman? You're on mute. You're on mute. Rotman, you're on mute. Rotman, Councilmember Rotman, you're on mute. Uh-oh.
Okay, I was having a problem finding the button. Sorry about that. Yeah, I'm glad this is coming back. I wasn't comfortable with our original decision to just rip out the Alfresco program up there. I thought we could probably find a win-win here. So, I'm glad staff and the MSPA got together and did that walking tour. I appreciate that. And it sounds like some good ideas are coming out of that. So, I support this. I was, just two things. One, I know, you know, ultimately, I think we're gonna try to not take out as much parking as we have right now. But some parking will be sacrificed in the long run to keep these up. And I was wondering if staff might want to look at our meter rates up there because maybe there's a potential. I mean, I know the concern of some of the merchants is, you know, they want to have a spot available if somebody needs to run in and pick something up. Like, I spoke to the woman, Maureen, who runs Once Upon a Time Books, and she's concerned that, you know, a customer wants to just come pick up a book. They want to be able to pull right in in front of her store and get it and go out. And, you know, if we can adjust those rates so that we make sure that we're getting turnover, we don't want people sitting and lingering in those spots. We want some turnover. So, potentially, that's something that we could look at. And even, I know in Pasadena, they did this with Old Town Pasadena. You know, look at returning some of that money, that revenue into improvements along Honolulu. So, a model like that, if you could, you know, consider that, I think would be great. That's really it for me. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm sure. So, yeah, so I think they do have a parking fund up there, and those parking revenues do go in there. And I think they had done a study just before you guys were elected to council. So, it was rather comprehensive. But I usually don't like flip-flopping on issues. I was very much intent on letting the voices of Montrose decide what they wanted to do with their Alfresco dining. And I did receive, this was back, it was in May, I think, May 22, actually, a very concerned member of the MSPA calling me and saying, whatever you do, we've gotta get rid of that Alfresco. The businesses don't like it. Get rid of it. So, I, perhaps my fault, I was under the impression that that was perhaps a universally-held belief up there. It was not, as we received phone calls and emails and petitions from many, many people, tens if not hundreds, indicating they wanted to keep the Alfresco. This was after our decision was made. So, again, I just want to do what the folks in Montrose, not just the business owners, but the patrons and residents in the immediate area want to do. So, I have no objection extending this to October 11. But Bradley, I don't want just you and the Montrose Shopping Park Association. We've gotta make that group a little bit bigger to make sure that we have a complete survey of the opinions and the voices up there. Because I, I mean, guys, you, MSPA, you asked me to vote against it. I promised you, I said, I'm gonna vote against it. And now, I kind of got burned for it. So, I don't want that to happen again. So, please, Bradley, extend your group, cast a wider net, get some homeowner groups. I know there's a, you know, there's a homeowner association nearby, if not one or two, perhaps some others, just so we make sure that what we do truly reflects what the people of Montrose want. That's my only goal in this. Give them what they want and not be, not have us in the metropolis of Glendale dictate to them in Montrose what they should be doing. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Najarian. Councilmember Kasakian, did you have anything to add?
I'm happy to share my thoughts, although some of it has been expressed by my colleagues. But I believe there's one caller. If you'd like to listen to that caller before, we can take a pause and let them have their piece. Madam Mayor, it's your call.
Okay, do we have a call, Mr. Agajanian?
Yes, we do have one caller.
Okay, let's hear.
Ms. Valentine, you have three minutes. Go ahead.
Yeah, hi, good evening. I recently drove down Colorado in Pasadena, Old Town Pasadena. They have these horrible tents taking up Colorado Boulevard driving lanes. The street was a dead zone. There was no one there. Then, I went to that antique car event in Glendale. I couldn't believe how lively, how Glendale brand Boulevard came to life. Now, Montrose, it's not about parking. Every business has parking in the back, plenty of parking. But to have these fly-by developers set up tents or put, take it out onto the sidewalk while other businesses cannot do it. They have enough room indoors, and they will not be getting the same treatment. Anyway, that's my shtick. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Valentine. Go ahead, Councilmember Kasakian.
Thank you. I agree that whatever we move forward with, and it appears that we are there, some, as best as we can be, should be with the agreement of both the merchants, all the merchants, as well as, you know, take into consideration the patrons. But ultimately, we have to look at what we can do to help those individuals who, because of government mandates imposed upon them, had to shutter their businesses for a good portion of last year. I personally like the idea of Alfresco dining, although the current way, which is these concrete K rails, which were really seen as a temporary fix, I am not necessarily a fan of. I would like to see, as has been pointed out and as we have seen in other communities like the Gaslamp District in San Diego and other places that have implemented much more appealing, compliant with our state laws areas for people to gather and enjoy the outdoors. And in that regard, whatever we can do to enhance that as well as continue the discussion as to how to provide adequate parking for the areas that are most impacted. The times when the shopping park is most impacted is the best way to proceed forward. We have a unique relationship here with the Shopping Park Association. They are elected by their fellow shop owners, business owners in that area. There's hundreds of businesses up there. And I think that we need to respect their views and opinions and make sure that everyone's heard. So, I do support the first option, the alternative. And I will second Councilmember Agajanian's motion unless someone feels more strongly about it and wants to have that credit.
Well, I would, thank you, Councilmember Kasakian. I think, have I heard from everyone? I just want to, first of all, thank Mr. Calvert for his patience, for his professionalism, and for his perspective in working with all of us that were a part of this solution. You know, in our positions, they say that you can't please all the people all the time. Well, I think that this alternative comes pretty darned close. And we have the Montrose Shopping Park Association and their board who was willing to work with us, with Mr. Calvert, with staff. I'm very excited, Bradley, that you have a rapid deployment plan. That was very important in all of this. So, I'm excited about an urban design plan looking into the future. So, with that, I will take that motion and second.
I would like to move the item, as I said.
Okay. And I think it was Mr. Kasakian that seconded it?
Sure, I'll second it.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Rotman?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Devine?
Yes. Thank you all, and next item, please.
Next with the oral communications. Discussion is limited to items, not a part of this agenda. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report. I do have one caller at this time.
All right, thank you. Let's hear from them.
Kate Unger, you have five minutes. Go ahead.
Yes, hello. Yes, Mayor Devine, council members and staff. Just before I start talking on my comment, I just wanted to mention, do you all know that your live stream is like 45 seconds slow? It's a concern, you should look into that. So, anyway, Kate Unger, I am with Glendale Environmental Coalition, but this evening, I'm calling as a resident of our precious, fragile planet Earth. And I'm calling about the new report from the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change. I don't know if it came up already in the meeting. I'm joining late. But in any event, I'm calling about the IPCC report. And my question is, is your hair on fire? Mine is. The report was released yesterday, but in Europe. So, I woke up to the news yesterday morning. I've had yesterday and today to live with it. But my hair is still on fire. And you surely have heard about it, too. It was in the LA Times today. So, I'm assuming your hair is on fire, too. So, here's what the UN Secretary-General, Antonio Guterres, said in the statement yesterday. And my delivery can't do this justice. Really, I should be shouting my way through this comment. Today's IPCC Working Group One report is a code red for humanity. The alarm bells are deafening, and the evidence is irrecusable. Greenhouse gas emissions from fossil fuel burning and deforestation are choking our planet and putting billions of people at immediate risk. planet and putting billions of people at immediate risk. Global heating is affecting every region on Earth with many of the changes becoming According to the IPCC report, to avoid going over two degrees of warming the century, a level that will cause mass death and suffering and destabilize societies worldwide, we need immediate, rapid, and large-scale reductions in greenhouse gas emissions. Time's up. I mean, it's been up for a while, but the evidence is irreputable now. It's really in our faces, right? Everywhere we turn, climate havoc is in the news. Every increment, increment of emissions and every additional bit of climate disruption increases the danger to us all. We have to stop this. We all need to make changes, every last one of us. Individual actions aren't really where it's at, it's really at the level of society, but all of us have to do this. And I'm not talking about tinkering around the edges. We need transformational change. So I'm calling on you as policymakers for Glendale because you have the ability to make decisions about how this whole city operates. You have greater opportunity and greater responsibility to make choices that shape our future and help avoid the greatest harm. Climate chaos is both a global and a local problem. It affects Glendale directly. Glendale's leaders have to make this top priority. It's a simple moral decision, so this is a call to action. We can't have any more status quo thinking. Glendale has to make this top priority. The city needs to stop thinking we can keep going along as we used to. For example, Glendale Water and Power's top priority can no longer be just to keep the lights on, it's to not keep exacerbating the buildup of greenhouse gases in the atmosphere and to minimize our contribution to the climate crisis. That's job number one. It's about planetary survival. I am, of course, thinking about the Grayson Repowering Project, and the timing is remarkable. We know the partially recirculated DEIR was released on the same day as the IPCC report. And this project is powering its way back to city council in the coming weeks. I listened to the presentations to the GWPC and Sustainability Commissions last week, and I am not satisfied. Two years after the IRP, that said at that time, the best we could come up with was five new gas-burning units, 93 megawatts. Now, two years later, they've come up with what? The exact same thing, the same amount of gas generation. It's frustrating to put it mildly. We, we can't accept the claim that we have to move forward with the Grayson Project now because we've run out of time. We have run out of time, but in a different sense. We have to stop emitting GHDs. We've known it for years, but the truth is more starkly clear this year with the recent killer fires, heat and delusions, and now with this new report. So back to Secretary General Guterres, he says, "The viability of our society depends on leaders from government, business, and civil society uniting behind policies, actions, and investments that will limit temperature rise to 1.5 degrees Celsius. We owe this to the entire human family. If we combine forces now, we can avert climate catastrophe." But if today's report makes clear, there is no time for delays and no room for excuses.
Thank you, Ms. Unger. Thank you so much. I will tell you that Councilmember Brotman already set our hair on fire earlier this evening, but we appreciate your, your in-depth information. What's next, please?
Madam Mayor, I still have one more caller on the line. It's Ms. Valentine.
Okay. Put her on.
Ms. Valentine, you have five minutes. Go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to say how much I am grateful for Glendale Water and Power. They are working for this residents, not for the politicians, for no one else but the people that live here in Glendale. I lived in Los Angeles, and I'm living in Glendale, and I know the big difference. So I'm very grateful, especially when it's in regards of economics. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you, Ms. Valentine. Is that it?
That is all the callers for this, for this item.
All right. Thank you very much. What's, what's next, please?
Next item is new business.
Madam Mayor?
And we do have, yes, Mr. Kasakian?
I'd like to move that Glendale Water and Power Electric Utility Security Plan dated August 10, 2021, be approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Devine?
Yes. What's next, please?
Next is adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
We're adjourned at 8:15. Thank you all. Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.